Being it is nine thirty, we're going to call the Tuesday morning workshop of the Clickedat County Board of County Commissioners to order. First up, we have our Public Works Director.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have a few items on the consent agenda today. And a lot of this, most of it is federal paperwork for our new projects. So I don't know if you want me to go over all of those or just kind of hit the highlights.
We went over it.
It's enough work just having to sign all those. So let's see here. We have a item number seven is a concurrence to award. The bid for a small works contract between Pacific Power Group and the county. And this is for the the maintenance of our generators, emergency generators on our facilities. So we added two new generators to this contract, so that'll increase the price of that.
Yes.
This, starting this year.
And have we had the same group for years that's been doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we we bid it every year. We get a couple bids at the most, but yeah. But Pacific Power is.
And this is the realm of what the other bids always come in.
We usually don't get too many because you have to be very specialized to do generators. You have to have a, not only a license, a master electrician, you also have a mechanic too on staff. So they kind of, but their prices didn't go up much. Except for adding the new equipment. It was Divco's prices that went up over fifty percent.
And that's for the total contract over the course of the two years, that's not yearly, correct?
Say that again.
Is the twenty-six thousand yearly or is that for both years?
It gets yearly. Yearly.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, we also have the, where is that one, Divco? Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
It's item number twelve. So this is the one that went up, their prices went up. Everybody's bids that we received were high, higher for mechanical services. So that's adding this building, removing all the other annexes. We still went up about twenty-five thousand. So it's fairly significant increase this year. We also have item number nine is a, an agreement between asset. And that's for the monitoring of the alarm system, fire alarm in this building. So we finally reached an agreement and that'll be in place. Item number eight is concurrence to award small works contract with central mechanical services. And this is for the plumbing in the remodels in the courthouse that are ongoing. We have a couple reimbursable agreements, item number ten and eleven, between Rural Seven and Fire District Two. And that's for work that they might ask us to do in the next five years. Let's see. And then we also have item number thirteen as another reimbursable work agreement between the county and state parks. And they are actually thinking of some work for us, some paving work. And I think that's about it. That's different or unusual besides the federal paperwork. Okay, on the construction program, contractor supposed to come back this week or next week. They got the materials, so we can complete that project. Roosevelt Gray, we're doing punch list stuff and still waiting for test results. We're waiting for a schedule from the guardrail contractor. Courtney Road, I actually went out there the other day. They've moved a lot of material and are still moving a lot of material, but they're doing a really good job. They're finishing the hills, the slopes as they go. So that's a big cost savings for us and for them. But if you don't finish the slopes as you're doing them, and if you don't get done before the weather, then we end up paying a lot more in throwaway BMPs for hydro seeding and things like that. But we will, that won't happen this time, which is really good.
You say EMP?
BMPs.
What's a BMP?
It's a, it's a, basically what it is, is it's a slope stabilizer. Or it's used, it's not only slope stabilizer, it's also, it's a best management practice. This is what it stands for. But it's for storm waters, what it's.
And that's, that's because they're using all grade control equipment as they're going through, right?
We're also, we're, yeah, we're hubbing to for them. So it's a good, it's a good partnership. They're, they're moving, again, they're moving along, but they're moving along well as to the fact that, you know, you're not coming back. Once the slopes cut, it's done. They're putting the wattles in and come this fall, we'll spray it. They'll hydro seed it. Which again is a big savings because if you don't do that, you're still doing it anyway. And then they come, and then, yeah, then you, then they tear it all up the next year and then you get to pay for it again.
Where are they at, schedule wise?
Uh, they're a little behind, but they've done pretty well considering they've lost a few, at least two weeks. I think their, last time we checked, they're about five days behind. And Jeff's hoping to catch up. He thinks he will. And I was impressed, it's, it's quite a project, quite an earth mover. Okay, Clickedat Path, wherever we should be advertising soon for the concrete contractor. Parking lots, we're advertising the project this week. We haven't heard back from the bridge calls. And the Rock Creek Bridge will be advertised in twenty-three. We did hear back from Crab. We had some pretty, I guess, depends on how you want to look at it. We had good scores, which means the road's in bad shape for Sunnyside. So we stand a good chance of getting grant money for Sunnyside and one of our, hopefully one of our bridge projects and maybe even harms. You never know. A portion of harms. A portion of harms, yeah. They would only be a portion. Then we get the second funding if you get it later on. Yeah, partial funding for the projects is good because that pretty much guarantees that the next cycle, your project will get fully funded. So eventually you'll get there. Okay, on the maintenance side. So Goldendale Crew's still up on SADIS, working on the access and the site itself. And then we're, a lot of guys took off this week. So the rest of the crew that's still around are going to be pouring concrete and getting ready to install the auditor's ballot box in Centerville. So, and that'll be by the Grange. West End Crews, they're still patching and getting all the equipment ready for chip sealing. So they'll be start, starting that process as well this month. Facility side, I guess the two maybe items that are, had some progress, the blinds people are actually coming this week to finish up downstairs in the big conference room. And that'll then allow the sheet rockers and painters to get back in behind them and finish up so they can complete that work. The HVAC units that are outstanding, the actual engineers from the manufacturer are coming, flying in next week to take a look at the units that we're having problems with still and find out why they're doing what they're doing and sounding as noisy as they are. This is part of their, their warranty work, so.
Which means we've just already paid for it.
Yeah. But it's not normal, so it's kind of nice that they're actually taking it serious and coming out here to look. Nothing new on the HVAC units in the Pioneer Center. We're gonna try and keep things cool enough for Sharon and senior services there so they can function this summer and hope.
We have a summer so far, you didn't have to worry about it too bad.
Yeah, off and on, off and on, yeah. Anything else on the radio site you want to cover? Punching in the road and we'll start the building once the site has been set. We also, I don't have it on my list, but we also did get a, a free playground set for the Trout Lake Park. Actually, somebody from Trout Lake saw this, you know, wooden play structure on Facebook for free. And then they kind of called me and we went and looked at it and it looks pretty good. It's a nice, you know, cedar play structure. And so we're gonna set it up out at the park. Because I know the community's been after us for something more than the swing sets and teeter totters that are there. So we're gonna set it up this summer. That's our plan. So. That's everything on my list.
Any questions?
I did, as far as the Douse Part wastewater plant, where are we at in the, you know, next steps as far as with the DOE permits?
They have to submit.
Updating the plan.
They have to submit to DOE. I gotta test her Paul again and see where, where he's at. He's supposed to, they were supposed to get that ready to go. I haven't seen it and then submit to them so we could start moving forward. Because I don't know how lengthy of a process that'll be, but hopefully not long if we can push through. But they're supposed to give us something, so, you know.
We need to kind of know.
Yeah, so we can talk because I don't want them to just offer stuff up that, you know, that there were, nobody's in favor, supportive, do we? Because they're still want to offer up that where they change out the electronics and stuff, but there's a cost to that. But that would also help for the ortho, ortho phosphate issue that's there. But isn't been there for a while. But again, it doesn't matter to DOE, it was there. It comes, it goes, you know, I think we had it, I think we were over our limits twice last year, two months last year. But to them, you know, if you're over your limit, two hours, that's enough.
Build a new plan.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to keep following up on that.
Okay.
Just with my limited shelf life.
Title twelve, Road Standards Committee, where, when you planned on getting that, the band back together?
Hopefully before the end of the summer.
Have we got a legal opinion back from the prosecutor on that legal opinion? Has anybody heard anything?
Okay. All right, we are running ahead of schedule. I see Jeff King is online. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director King, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Apologize not being there in person. I'm working from home for a while. Got my update. There are a few additions to it since I sent it out last Thursday. And I will try and make note of those as I go through. Nothing on your consent agenda this week. Public safety radio system, performance and functionality. We have the ongoing occasional brief faults for county ops in the radio channel that create a silent key still. Tier one support is continuing to troubleshoot that. And I've approved some testing of the addition of diversity antennas at the Kaiser Ridge site, which is across the river from Wishram in Oregon. Actually, it's directly across from Avery Park, if you know where that is. So we're hopeful that adding that diversity antenna for that microwave there will solve that problem. This is something we've had to do at two other sites already. When the microwave crosses the Columbia River at certain points in time, it seems to be reflectivity and some atmospheric interference from the river itself and the reflections or something of that nature. All above my head, but the technicians and the engineers assure me that that's what's going on and it fixed it the other two times. One for Indian Hill and one for Arlington. So if this works, this will be our third and final shot across the river that we have to update in this manner. The maintenance side of the radio system, continuing the annual PMs. The facilities preventative maintenance was completed last month. The only significant report, I haven't seen the written report yet. The only significant report I got back verbally was that flat top security fence damage is continued. We haven't done anything about that the last two times, I believe. So I will need to, to see, given budget constraints and so on, if you want me to continue with looking into a different type of security fence there that is more robust and, and won't be so easily damaged by the snow loads and by the snowmobile traffic that runs over it when the fence gets topped over by snow. I will be looking into those options and getting cost estimates moving forward. But right now, the site is not secured by that fence. Tier one radio equipment preventative maintenance is started in June. Tier three for the radio equipment will start this month. Continue to review last year's annual report for those inspections and have as much as possible fixed while they're up there on their twenty-twenty-two annual preventative maintenance visits to save mobilization costs. The repair needs at the Berdoin site are still outstanding. Those came up the end of last year and were approved by me to go ahead with the fixes. And then we had the stacker butte microwave radio issues and that took precedence. So I'm going, or I have instructed the tier one maintenance providers to do what they can and during their annual preventative maintenance visit to that site. And if resolutions can't be found, then we'll continue to fix that. That is a key site for the radio system on the west end of the county. The next two are ongoing and I'm still dealing with astound on those. I think based on the fact their company changed hands again, there might be some shifting around, not getting the response they typically do out of their local maintenance man, so. Waiting for that. As I mentioned last week, we're in the process of requiring surplus microwave equipment for the radio system at no cost from another county and actually some more that I was made aware of late last week from City of Yakima. So this will be coming, some from the City of Yakima, some from the Yakima County Fire District Five up into including potentially microwave antennas, which would be of great benefit. Maybe two or three of those, as well as some Quantar base stations that we can use to further the lifespan of our page channel as we've discussed before. So that is very good news in my opinion, and I'm excited to be able to take those on. And most, if not all of that, is at no cost to the county at this point. Some of those things they might need to put out for surplus and if there are bids on them, then I would plan on bidding on those if the costs were reasonable. Any questions?
No questions here, sir.
Okay. Radio site lease agreements have finally been making some progress on that. Specifically, what's not on your document in front of you that I submitted, the flat top site land lease renewal for DNR is in progress. That's renewal is due by the end of August. I do expect there should be some cost increases as we always see in our land leases when we renew them. I believe the state will be increasing that. Did make progress also on the boilerplate land lease and the sublease co-location agreement application. So that was very beneficial. Be moving forward with other sublease agreements based on that boilerplate, once it gets through the prosecutor's office. The radio project, I made the determination that it was best interest of the county to use the existing microwave radio equipment and the same microwave system that we have at all of our other sites currently. So we're proceeding with that. The addition of this microwave equipment that I just explained, surplusing to us will make that even more viable. Also researching the potential use of a commercial grade microwave for the security camera feed only. Because the current system carries all the radio traffic and all the alarms, but it is not sufficient to carry the security camera video feed. Any questions about the radio project from my side?
No, sir.
Okay. Nine-one call taking and public safety radio dispatching. You can see the call volume reports for May. Those are about average for the last couple of years. Twenty-twenty saw a change for us and an increase in call volume. But that is now stabilizing at that higher level. Staffing remains critical. You can read all that, I won't go into it. Basically, we have four out for an extended period of time out of the schedule. We have one out right now on, on sick leave as well. So everybody is doing everything they can to cover shifts and support their teammates. We still have three communications officers in training. Two, we started on June first and one we started on June seventeenth. So far, all is going well in that training process. We're continuing to advertise for three full-time comms officers in training positions and one casual position with limited responses. On the operations and training side, the communication room ceiling proof, soundproofing project was completed. And we haven't had a significant rain or hail event since it was completed. But partway through that installation of that soundproofing, we did have a significant rainstorm. And even with half of it in place, it made a difference. And you can hear the acoustic quality in the room just from reverb and interior noise has improved. I have no doubt that the exterior sound issues have been greatly reduced as well. We will see when we have the next thunderstorm. It's the nine-one phone system update continues to, to get tied up, some punch list items. And that is pending our nine-one, our text to nine-one project as well as Chief of Operations working in the schedule as often as he is now and, and will be through October. Those projects are, have slowed some. The state access system, physical onsite security portion was successful and the remote technical audit portion is still ongoing. Bright spot in the users' agreements. Unlike last time, we renewed those Fire District user agreements. Took us quite a while to get them all through. The, as of last week, twenty-seventh, thirteen out of fifteen already submitted to us. So that's a very good thing in my opinion. Any questions about nine-one dispatch?
No, sir.
Okay, emergency management program. Since our last update, we've received no new PPE requests. The outdoor burn ban. And I have had some time since our last update to do some research on other counties' burn bans, what they do and how they do it. And also based on our discussions, when we talked about zone three burn ban and potentially having levels or phases, I'll be incorporating that in. So I am making progress in that arena as well. Wildfire reports, told you some of these last week. The first three on the sheet that you have were up until Thursday, when I submitted that document. There have been several wildfires since then, all of little or no significance. Some of the highlights are was initially a report of four fires on the top of the Clickedat Grade on the Glenwood Highway. Turned out to be just one fire on the Glenwood Highway on Friday, July first, Saturday the second. There were two fires worth noting, one the east side of Rock Creek, Harrison Ridge. That was small, difficult to get to, but once they got to it, it was not difficult to take under control. The other one was that possible lightning strike on the Good No Hills. And on Monday, the fourth, there were several fires started of little significance to fireworks, of course. One, one garbage can full of fireworks debris caught their pretty close garage on fire in the city of Goldendale and some other small grass fires in both Goldendale and White Salmon. Over there were also the fire in Dallasport Railroad trout south of the Old Ferry Road. Didn't get a size up on that as we did on dispatch for Fire District Six in Dallasport. Byron Road in Alderdale, Yakima County called for mutual aid for a grass fire over there. Don't have any more details on that, but they didn't spend too long over there. Simcoe Mountain west of Highway ninety-seven, this was the second one in that area. I still haven't heard whether that was caused by lightning, holdover or rekindled brush pile. The last one was a rekindled slash pile. But that, the initial report, it was sixty by a hundred feet and not progressing rapidly. There's also a seven acre gas fire on Woodland Road and Old States Road area yesterday. On the emergency management program side, training and exercises, the DM staff and volunteers participated in the Cascadia Rising twenty-twenty-two tabletop exercises. It was a regional exercise and it was held by Homeland Security Regions. Some good information in there, which we'll be reviewing and assimilating in the after action review. You can see all the EM program grants listed and their statuses. Two things that didn't get added before I sent this to you was that the twenty-twenty-two EMPG grant application been received and is due July thirty-first. We'll be working on that to get it submitted on time. That's our base grant for the program. And the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two shush and twenty-one EMPG quarter reports are due at the end of this month to the state. At the end of this month to the state. On the public information and education side, been sending out those media releases for, um, burn bands as well as, you know, wildfire. Mitigation and safety and evacuations. Been in touch with the, uh, FEMA region ten. Personnel and their contractor doing the flood risk map. Uh, project and that they're anticipating, uh, outreach planning meeting to be scheduled for the week of July eleventh. I know we have, uh, that on our agenda to talk about next with, uh, planning and public works as well. And we've also been asked by the Trout Lake Community Council. To talk to them about the flood risk map outreach. Uh, planning as well as what they call fact, fire adapted community. For the Trout Lake area. And, uh, the potential to provide them some support during the Trout Lake Fair for emergency. Uh, management program activities. The Starlink Internet for the mobile command post. Um, it's been a success so far, got it really quickly, which was surprising. Uh, and that is if you don't remember, that's the, um, R V version, so you can take it anywhere. And only pay for it when you use it one month at a time. Frank has set that up and. Tested it to the basic levels and now we're, uh, testing the integration into the mobile command post network system. So that anybody that can goes in there can, uh, log on to it, either county, um, laptops or. Non-county laptops and make that work for everyone, make it part of our network. Which, uh, should be great. Uh, lastly, on emergency management, I assisted, uh, last Thursday, the thirtieth, assisted Golden Dale P D and other city employees. Uh, keeping track of locating and, uh, encouraging a black bear to move outside the city limits. I don't know if you saw any of that on Facebook. It was not quite the stir here in town for a while. But he was, um, right in the middle of a courtyard in a apartment building in downtown Golden Dale. When the first reports came in and. Chased him all the way through, uh, the pool area and Tony Park and across High Street to the cemetery. Over Observatory Hill and and on north out of town. And Chief Hunziker was, I haven't seen the heat release yet, but he was very thankful for dispatch's performance. And my assistance. So. I believe that's all I have for now. Any questions, thoughts?
No, I'm glad you were able to get to Starlink and got it set up. Good job, Frank.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
We reached out to Public Works. Okay. Well, we are going to, uh, move on to our FEMA mapping discussion. I think we're gonna set the blinds down.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I'm like, what do these buttons do?
Wow, that really does work.
Miss Lee. Brenda sent over a thing saying use the travel form off of the. Whatever, our.
G drive?
Yeah. It looks totally different than the one we currently use. Um, should we? Be following that one? Well, they changed the, the mileage. Yeah. So I don't know if if we want to just tweak that little number down there, or if she wants us to use this thing, which is totally different.
Oh, it's a brand new one again. They may change.
Well, it's her, her old one was different than this too. Cause it has. It has all the meals and everything on it. Um, and we don't have that on ours, but I wanted to confirm that. Which one I should be using. I don't want to make anybody angry.
Are we waiting on anyone else? Director Kelsey, are you there?
That would be a surprise to me if he. Zooms.
Upstairs.
Yeah. Maybe he just, he decided he only gets paid enough to walk the stairs once a day. He's not doing it twice.
I, I know he's there, but.
Brenda, hi Dan, here's the link to the current form. Thank you, Miss Brenda.
There he is.
I was just gonna say, it's, it's different than what we use, so I don't wanna.
We should also have a table.
All right. Is there anything we needed to do to get? You have some pictures or something?
Yeah, if I, if, uh, the discussion goes that way, I'm not sure what you're interested in and how much you know or. I just kind of guessed last week and. Did some research, so.
All right, well, whoever wants to lead us off, lead us off.
This, so, so this is a joint effort and I, I guess, um, the purpose for this workshop is to make sure. The county and departments to be involved are all aware where we at. Cause Public Works Planning, Emergency Management, all have representatives and attended the last team meeting hosted by FEMA. And they are getting ready to, um. Share the draft map and start their outreach program. And we were like emergency management or planning, we've been, um, contacted by. Like community councils and want to know, um, what. What the plans are from the county side, how are we going to let the people affected by these new maps? How are we going to let them know what's going on? And so we just want to have this drawn discussion today.
Well, um. I worked, uh, I went to the meetings, um, with, uh, FEMA flood, you know, for that mapping program. And when, and they did a lot out and a lot of outreach out in the Trout Lake Valley, which is the area, I think, other than, I think, here in town. That's the most heavily affected, um, and that whole county on the flood maps. And, um, so I think there's been a lot of outreach done, like they've actually seen the maps, you know, the community has a lot of, and, you know, now it's gonna go. More public, I guess. Um, I was really impressed with, you know, their ability to get down there to. You know, within the inch about where the flood water is gonna go and how often. It's just, it's really, really amazing work they're doing. Slowest process I've ever seen, but really amazing work. I think, what they, did it start in twenty seventeen or something?
Yeah, that's when I think Kim and Kim and I first got contacted and provided information. Yeah, so we provided information for the improvements at Bear Creek that the county did after the ninety-six flood. And then we also provided, um, all the plans for all of our bridges, so they can incorporate those into the floodway. And see how that affected the model. So they've been working on this for quite a while, but it is a big project.
Um, would you guys like to see the maps about what it looks like? I've, I've seen them, so yeah, please, let's take a look.
All right, we'll see how this goes. Not so well.
Pressure's on now.
It is. Okay. Or you just have to share your screen. Okay, I gotta find the right panel too to share. And there we go. Okay. So, um. They, there's a whole. Um, raft of products out there that they produced. Um, you can either look at the map. Of the new, um, I'll zoom out a little bit. So this is Golden Dale, so the old data, old mapping is on the right-hand side, the right panel. And then as we cross the screen, this is the new, and they're not really synced very well, so, um. I zoom in here. I can actually. So this is. South Columbus. And, uh, this, this on this side is the, uh. New data, and if I come over here, I kind of have to pull, drag this back. But right where you can see, and I can't, if I let go of my mouse, you won't be able to see it, but, uh, there's a. Those black lines that cut across. Um, the shade of the blue and the red shaded area. Um, there's one that says sixteen twenty-five. And it's close to the road. If I let go of this, you'll, so it's this one. Watch this one. This is, uh, the old data. And this is South Columbus. If I drag this back, if I can. Um, South Columbus is kind of that tan, kind of have a, kind of has a tan strip. You can see where the floodway, which is the red. And then, uh, um, the, the flood area, which is the cyan or blue color. Um, that one, how it's changed, they both, the floodways actually shrunk down significantly in most areas that I've noticed. Um, and, you know, it's because of the, the way they collected the data, I'm sure. I mean, today we have LIDAR. You can cut a lot of cross-sections from LIDAR data and it's really easy. Back in nineteen eighty, when our old flood maps were created, you know, they had, uh, they had ways of doing it, but it was very time consuming. And so you didn't do a lot of cross-sections. You didn't cut a lot. And so, um. The data seems to be much more accurate. And so anybody that wants can, um. If they can find this information and maybe that's half the challenge is, how do we make this stuff easy for citizens to, to go after and. And look in their area if they're concerned.
Can you? But can you point at the old data and the new data? Or a Tony Park?
Uh, okay.
I believe I see the pool there, but.
Yeah, so there's the pool. Um, so that's a good reference. Let me move this over here and, uh. So now if I drag this back, now you're looking at the same area. You can see the pool. So you can see that the, the floodway got wider in some areas and narrower in others.
And the, the new one is the one on the right.
Correct.
And, um, this is Jeff King. Part of the reason that data in the certain areas and this specifically, the, uh. Little Clickatatt River through Gold Mills because they did, um, groundwork. Uh, both in this section of the little Clickatatt River. And. Jewett Creek, Dry Creek in Binge and White Salmon area. All along the Clickatatt River and the, um. Through the town of Clickatatt and south of Clickatatt. And at our request, those were the areas that they focused on and actually did on the ground surveys. On top of the LIDAR work that they did countywide.
Tan color.
What is that?
Um, it's moderate area of moderate flood risk. So they don't have this comparison, which I was kind of disappointed and we're trying to find out why in Trout Lake. Cause I know there's a lot more issues there where people were close. To being in the floodway or flood zone area or out, and, uh, so you can't really compare. Um, but the, the data was really the old data, the old FEMA maps, I have. It. Compared to what it was in nineteen eighty when they did it and what it is now. It's changed quite a bit. And.
Where does this map exist right now? I mean, what site are you on?
Um, FEMA.
Washington.
Yeah, it's a link that they.
It's ecology.
Yeah. So if I zoom into Trout Lake, you can see.
We can put a hyperlink on our.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's maybe one of the things they, they're kind of asking us to kind of help facilitate this dialogue. And, uh, and I'll show you something else that they prepared for Skamania County. So you can kind of see that there is no old data in the Trout Lake area. When I move over here, there's nothing. There wasn't, yeah. But you, if you look on that, uh, map that I have, you can see that it really is a gross estimation. From the former data, but now you can see they really. Looked at this, and so there are a lot of changes where it was a solid. Line through these areas. Now there's a lot more people that are out, but I noticed that in some areas it did change and, and. Captured some other, other properties, yeah, so. But there's no comparison on here. You have to go back to the old paper map unless they have the data and just haven't put it out there yet. Uh, let's see. So they prepared FEMA prepared this story map basically for Skamania County. And I think it's part of the outreach and I think this is something that we should ask and trying to talk to them about doing for us, which it's. Um, they're talking about putting this out on their website as a link. And so basically it, it's the story of here's, here's why we're doing this, here's what we did. And kind of lays out the whole process for them. And it's actually, you know, why, it goes through, it's actually pretty good, tells how they did it, how they collected data. And, uh, kind of walks people, the public through, um, the process. And has several videos and things for, for, for the general public to look at, and then of course links. And then of course links to the maps themselves. You know, the other, the other thing that we might want to do to help them, because really it's their product. We can't answer too many questions on it. It's not our product, but we want to get the information out there. Do we, you know, in areas like Trout Lake and Clickatatt and areas where we have had historic flooding, that we, you know, capture that, those people and their addresses and send them a postcard or something, letting them know that this stuff is available on our website or links to, from our website. And a way for them to comment to FEMA. Whether we collect those and send them to FEMA or they can send them directly to them.
Yes, but what comments is FEMA looking for here? When, you know, we look at, all this is done by LiDAR data. I mean, you'd have to be a geomorphologist in order to contradict anything.
Yeah, so questions, especially in Trout Lake are going to be, you know, I, because they, and I don't know if they'll continue to do that, but there's this base flood elevation that gets set in your area. And Mochi and I have worked with a couple of people that try and say, they have to actually have a surveyor come out there and survey their actual elevation and prove that, you know, it's above that or to FEMA to get the exemption. And so, yeah, you'd have to hire a surveyor to actually
Right.
make a case that something's different. So, and it seems like this summer. And then the plan, their plan is to then, there's an appeal period in the fall. So, you know, there's really a short window for people to actually look at the maps and then appeal it in the fall.
But short of having contrary data that you, there's really, what are you going to appeal? Except that, I mean, other than, I don't like it, I don't, it's like, but.
Yeah, I've never, I haven't seen it flood at the 100-year flood level.
Right. So I mean, other than, I mean, but those are more, that's kind of a global, you know, kind of not, it's like if you want to, because there probably, there could be, although I doubt there's many mistakes as far as with the elevations. Cause I think their LiDAR, I think the data, they probably have better data than anybody's going to have.
Yeah.
And so, but you might find one somewhere.
Sure.
Like you said, on the ground, you go out, you survey it, you can say, no, I'm above that line, your, your line is wrong.
Yeah.
But it's going to be more of the policy question about that line is, is the line.
Yeah.
And so I mean, I guess people can comment on it, but I don't know what you're going to do about it.
Yeah, I, I think, well, I haven't looked through the story map that they prepared for Skamania, whether they have that on here, but I would think someplace they need to talk about the appeal process. Cause that's where we're heading.
Right.
And before they adopt. So if you look at that handout that I gave you, it's got the last.
You can submit your comment for appeal as you're scrolling there, you're right at the spot you need to, you're right at the bottom.
Oh.
Oh, there it is.
There you go, yes.
There you go.
Yeah, so they, they actually put that in here too. So I, I think something like this for us would be really ideal to put out there for the citizens.
Cause if that gets them to contact them directly versus 50 people going through you to try to play telephone, that would be great.
Yeah, and like, like Mochi said, that we are all involved, all other departments. There are several departments that are involved in each, we each have our own piece. But none of us really, it's, the whole big picture is the combination of all of us and then some. So it would be hard to just contact one of us and get all the information. So the last page of that handout that I gave you kind of talks about the rest of the schedule. So we started this, kind of helping provide information to FEMA a long time ago. And, but now we're here.
Discovery meeting was July of 2015.
Yeah, that was, when I first started, I was contacted almost immediately about setting this up. And also in my conversations with the FEMA lead for this project, outside of the regular meetings, their standard procedure is to run this in local papers for two weeks. Advertising the availability of the storyboard. They're already going to come, produce this storyboard for our county, for the project in our county. And the best thing we can do is help them with local resources to get community awareness that it's available. Everything else they should be able to handle. And we just need to direct them to this storyboard, which should give everybody the information they need. Also shared with me that there were more reductions of structures than additions in this new, better data. And most of the changes were in the Trout Lake area.
Which is one thing I was thinking, you know, it's not very hard to take this and then find all the areas that have been added. And if we could send, or they could send something to each one of those households that have been added to it. So that those are the people that are, you know, that's who this is truly affecting. The people that are already in it are already in it, you're already paying your flood insurance, you're already part of it. It's the new ones that are getting added that I think we need to reach out to.
That might be challenging, but I'll, I'll talk to Kim about whether we have that kind of access to their data and how, if we can make it parcel, that partially accurate, that'll be the challenge for us.
Yeah. But better yet, let's have them do it.
That's what I'm saying. That's kind of my worry is if we think it's a parcel and send a notification and we're wrong, I, I am fine with asking them to do it, but I don't know that I'm good with us doing it.
Yeah, I, I think sending out information to the people that are, to go look, that are, might, they're in that area.
Right.
Just kind of helping facilitate people going there. They have their own process. I'm not sure whether sending notifications to people on an individual basis is part of their process. I doubt it is.
That's not part of their process, but that's the, that's what needs to happen though.
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, we have to find some way that we can focus on the, like you said, Trout Lake, Clickatatt, those, that those communities, that those people are paying attention. Cause I don't want, and again, it's, it's really up to the individuals to do their own homework and become, you know, educated as to what's going on. We can't do it for them. I mean, but we do need to kind of sound the, I don't want to say alarm, because I don't think this is necessarily alarming. It's just information that you need to be aware. I don't want to hear about this, well, it won't be me, but I don't, six months, cause that's normally, you get a packed full of room six months after implementation and it's like, where were you?
For the last five years.
For the last five years? Well, I didn't know, well, we, we tried to get you to pay attention and you didn't. And I think we have another opportunity. And whether, you know, Clickatatt, Clickatatt doesn't have a super active community council or anything anymore. But if we can somehow reach out, you know, and just to the community so that they know. And then it's really up to them. I'm not, you know, we're not going to go door to door and say, hey, you are now in the flood plain and you need to be aware of that. It's, I'm sorry, I think people have a responsibility to pay attention for themselves. And it's, because we, we get that all the time where it's like, oh, you need to send a notice to every person that might be affected. It's like you would, that would be, your mailbox would be full of junk mail and that's what it would be for people. Because we, we do work every week that might affect a person in this county. And we just can't do that. So I'm, I'm old school where I think I'm responsible for myself. I think we should do our best to get the message out there, but ultimately it's up to folks to take care of themselves.
Sure.
I would like to see the storyboard if they will build it. I would like to see outreach to the community councils. Then put it in their hands to advertise in their communities. You know, maybe throw it on each community's Facebook page, throw it on our county website.
Or their eight Facebook pages.
Yeah, right. And then we, we've done what we could, you know, maybe throw it in the paper or something and.
Yes, the only other one would be is if, say you were, you, you used to be in it. So you're paying your flood risk insurance and now you're out.
Right.
That's far more possible.
And then, and now you're out, but you look at back at 96 in the Trout Lake Valley and they might, they might have got hit. And so.
Yeah, they're like, yeah.
But I mean, the, the meeting, one of the meetings I was at, you know, the, the community was there and they were saying like, actually, no, I think you guys don't understand how the water flows here. Cause you know, you've got those irrigation canals and diversions and stuff that make an impact. So, but I think what they've come up with is pretty darn.
Pretty good. I mean, that's your
Yeah.
assessment of somebody that's lived here. I mean, that, that's part, sometimes I, it's hard for me sometimes when I go to a meeting and I get told by somebody about, oh no, you don't understand. It's like, yeah, I've lived, I lived through it, I was here. You don't understand, I don't, I know your, your stuff says it does this, but that's not what it did. This is what I observed. And so, yeah.
Okay. So the other thing to note too, I, I was kind of looking, thinking about, well, what about Glenwood? And there's nothing, it's, they've actually outlined track D boundary.
I saw that, I saw that.
It's just like nothing there.
So. No, there are no flood risks. No flood risk in Glenwood, no.
Yeah.
So that was one benefit, I guess. So do they have, what are they, I mean, they obviously must have data and they did work or?
Trying to find out. I don't, I don't know why.
Different.
I think with the change, it may, they may have decided to do something different based on that boundary change.
What I've seen in a lot of meetings with federal entities is yes, they've added that boundary line change to their maps and are treating it with kid gloves until further investigation, I guess. They don't want to ruffle feathers with the, with the new designation. I've seen that at least three times in the last year.
All right. Anything else? This LiDAR data and all this really good information, can we use this with regards to our flood mapping for ourselves? Our floodways, you know, the ecology grant?
Oh, the channel migrations? Yes, yes. We, I shared the information with our consultant and they are, I believe they reached out to FEMA to try to get some of those information as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So just to be clear on what actions you want us to take, so.
Good that you're circling back.
Yeah, so do you want us to work with IT to get that? Once we get a storyboard and map available to put links to those on our website?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, and then as far as contacting the community councils, do you want us to draft us, to draft a letter for your review and signature to send out to those groups?
Sure.
I always love it when somebody else drafts it. I'm good at reviewing.
And, and to be clear, FEMA is, is going to have a bunch of stuff that they can supply us. This community outreach documents, samples and templates that they've already showed us.
Yeah, cause I would imagine.
They can choose what we want to use, yeah, and post all that.
Yeah.
So it's not like they want to be in a black box somewhere either.
And I know, you know, like the, the affected communities are on the email distribution that goes out every, you know, we get an email about the flood risk stuff, I don't know, once a week it seems.
That's the problem though, is that people just get, they ignore things. Cause after a while, you, yeah, it's like, how many emails do we get that I'm like, yeah, whatever? Cause it's, and they're buried in there, once in a while you get like, oh, I should have been paying attention. And it's usually after the fact. It's like, oh no, we adopted that a year ago. What? We sent you eight notices and you.
That's what we have to Director McClure for.
Right, yes, thank you. Yes, he is actually watching. He's reading all of those, I know. And fretting about them and losing sleep about them. So thank you, thank you for doing that. I lose sleep about other things, so.
All right, thank you guys for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, wow. Do you guys have anything you'd like to discuss before or?
Wow, nothing really exciting.
Yeah, I, oh, that's what it was. So there was a lot of work done out in Trout Lake after 96. And so our old, our old flood map wasn't correct any longer because we diverted water overflow places to different areas after 96, like literally made it go completely.
A different way.
And so, yeah, that was, that's what it was. It was a long time ago, I forgot. All right, well, if you guys don't have anything, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we recess for the lunch break. It's hard to even call it that at 10:30, but mid-morning break and we will reconvene at 1 o'clock.
I'd second.
There's a motion and a second to recess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Being that it is 1 o'clock, we are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickatatt County Board of County Commissioners to order. First, let the record show, all three commissioners are present and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the business agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And are we good with, I, I am.
The three minutes.
The three minutes. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes for May 24th, May 31st and June 28th as presented.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the commissioner meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we will be moving into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. If you would like to provide public comment, please do so. And we will respond at 1:25 if the commissioners choose to. We will begin as always in the room, if anybody would like to provide public comment. Okay, we're going online. If you'd like to provide public comment, star six to unmute your phone, wave your hand, raise your hand, turn your video on, get our attention and we would love to hear from you. Everybody's, oh, Sandra, call in. Are you there? Hello? Andrea, would you try to turn your video off? We cannot hear you. I don't think your connection's strong enough.
If she stops the video, we might be able to hear.
Yeah, Ms. Sandra, could you try to turn your video off or call in on your cell phone or landline? We cannot understand anything you're saying. Okay, we will let. Okay, we will let Sandra get back online on the next try. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Raise your hand, star six. Everybody still on vacation? Ruby?
Uh, Commissioners, I, I just wanted to follow up with last week and apologize for saying that you guys suck collectively. Um, it was an easy way of saying something that could have been said a little bit more finesse. So for that, I apologize. Uh, but I do think that, um, the board doesn't work very well together, and the public has seen it. But things seem to be improving, so I hope it just continues to move forward, move that direction.
Okay. Thank you for your apology, Ms. Irving. Is there anything else? All right. Next up, star six, raise your hand, turn your phone on, or your camera on. I was trying to see if, uh.
She is back on.
Is she back on? Ms. Sandra, are you there? Could you unmute yourself?
Yes, I am here. Are you able to hear me now?
We can hear you now, ma'am.
Okay. I think being up in the hills just can't do the video. So, um, my name's Sandra Duncan. I've spoken to the commission before, and it didn't go so well. I was in a very, um, distressed state with my husband in the hospital at the time. Um, I live in a subdivision called Remington Ridge Subdivision. It's Remington Road that goes from Lyle Snowden to McGowan Road. And it has an emergency easement that goes to McGowan Road. And it's been violated and gated against the rules that were approved by the county and all the entities that approved this from being state forests to the Remington Ridge subdivision. And it's been tragic. I'm disabled. I have PTSD. I'm not a violent person. But when I was provoked by the violations of Sheriff Songer at the beck and call of the Little Seven Stabin Ranch, all over a gate that's illegal that blocks my emergency easement, it provoked me to throw many F-bombs. And after 28 encounters, still doing nothing illegal, I was provoked into what I was told was the psychotic break. And I stood on the courthouse stairs, coming out of the Clicktack County Jail after being wrongly arrested. And I yelled natural law wins over man's laws. And I'll do everything I can to get you out of power, Sheriff Songer. I was very pleased that he was retiring. But last month, when I had a spine and head injury and had to be picked up by the ambulance and taken to Skyline, again, I was violated by that emergency easement being blocked, and I could hear the sound of the ambulance coming and stopping, and then having to go around eight more minutes because of an illegal gate that nobody will stand with me to have removed. I'm told it's a civil matter. I suggest looking up the word civil. I've asked for help from the county commissioners. I've asked for help from the department, building, the planning, the fire marshals, Appleton Fire District. And nobody seems to care what my husband, Norm Duncan, and I are being put through. Now we're coming up on fire season again. And it's one thing to be provoked and have my own self-violated, but now we have McGowan Springs, a level four stream with a 50-foot buffer in an area of the protected gray squirrel with five nests that by the L77 Ranch, all the vegetation has been taken off the creek. It, the vegetation trees have been cut up within that 50-foot buffer for trafficking of cows. And a large tree that is mating, pair of owls has, has been down. And I wonder, is it worth putting my life in danger of calling out the L77 Ranch and Sheriff Songer over some owls and squirrels in a stream? And I don't know.
Ms. Duncan.
Someday, somebody will care.
Ms. Duncan, thank you for your comment. Your time is up, ma'am. There's nothing that we can do right now, but I see that Commissioner Soder is looking at this and where you're located right now.
Yes, we've had a wonderful conversation and then very disappointing after that. I would love a personal call from him.
Um, if you would send an email to the B O C C, I'm sure one of, one of the commissioners could give you a call.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day, ma'am.
You, too.
Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Star six, raise your hand, turn your video on, 0088.
Yeah, this is Delmer Eldred, Golden Dale. And I was just wondering why the commissioners decided to punish the taxpayers to have to pay double for permits and to get paperwork done by the planning commission. We already, we already pay the taxes to pay their wages. The thing was that the developers do not contribute to this county, and they are getting, they were, I don't know if they still are, but they were getting free time that we were paying people, and they were using our tax dollars and the time that it takes for these people to process their permits. And I was just wondering why now, all of a sudden, the citizens that are already paying, we have to pay twice? If we have to pay the time that it takes for them to approve our permits?
Do you have, do you have more, sir?
No, I just want to know what is the reasoning that we have to pay twice for the permits? When you have people that are developers that have never contributed to this county, that you have for years let them use our tax dollars to process their permits? And now you want to punish us because you're going to make them pay for the use of county personnel to do their work? And they, they haven't contributed anything to this county where we pay all the taxes?
I am sure that one of the commissioners will respond to your question at 1:25. Mr. Eldred? Do you have any other questions?
Do you have a lot of calls right now? You can't make a statement?
I have 50 people on this Zoom call, so yes, I try to ensure that everybody has a chance to comment before we respond.
Okay.
Please come forward.
Yep, it is. Kathy Muko, Goldendale. I just wanted to compliment you all on the appearance of both this new building and the old building and the grounds and all the new parking. Everything looks really, really nice. And it's good that it's looking so nice because Community Days is coming up. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Muko. Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Star six to unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on. In the room?
Did you have a question?
Please come forward and ask.
I just wanted to ask, is there an agenda for tonight's meeting?
Wouldn't you like to say what tonight's meeting, so everybody could know what she's talking about?
I could. So the tonight's meeting that she's questioning is Mr. Eldred, who was just on, wanted a meeting with Commissioner. Um, I obliged, so this is a meeting being held in this Commissioner's chambers. Uh, this is not an open public meeting by definition in RCW, so it will not be Zoomed. It will not be recorded. There will not be staff in the room. Um, this is a private meeting between me, Mr. Eldred, and other people that Mr. Eldred invited.
It's up here or not downstairs?
Correct. It's not a open public meeting by RCW. Because when you look at open public meeting, then we have to take notes. We have to post it in the paper. We, a lot of things, it's not just people talking in a meeting. So that would be private meeting versus open public meeting.
And that will only be one commissioner there, so it's not a commissioner's meeting.
Not by me. Unless you want to be. And then, you know, that would make good paper fodder, but, you know.
Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment?
I think I just made it more confusing for everybody. No, I just had comment that people wanted it recorded, that people wanted it via Zoom. To do that, I would have to have staff present. Oops, hit my mic. Uh, we would need to post it in the paper following the RCWs of an open public meeting. Um, so it is not that. It is just me and whoever's sitting it over there.
Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Ms. Bosque?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Sherry. Um, thank you again, Commissioner Christopher, for offering to meet with a few people this evening. I do commend you on that. Um, and I'm hoping for it to be very friendly and enlightening for everybody tonight. Um, I would like, you know, I just heard some talk. I couldn't really hear the audience members, but I heard you say that this isn't a public meeting, which I, I understand what you're saying through the RCW. So, but I was wondering, does that make it that you would be answering questions in your private capacity tonight? Or would you still be representing yourself as a county commissioner under your oath of office?
When I answer questions, I can only speak for myself. I cannot speak for the board without prior approval and permission from the board. So if I answer any question, even if it's during citizen comment right now, it is not the answer of the board. It is only the answer of me. Kind of gets confusing. Um, but let's just say anytime you hear me talk, it's only me speaking, not the Board of County Commissioners speaking.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Also, my, my question today was if one or a couple or any of you want, or I would like at least one response from one commissioner. Um, would you please, in, in your own personal opinion, as your own commissioner, would you, would you like to say what you believe are the top three benefits to Clicktack County for the incoming industrial solar projects for our county? So I guess to clarify, you know, just list the top three benefits you believe these developments, these industrial solar developments bring to our county, such as taxes, jobs, um, whatever, whatever it is that you believe is the benefit for these solar projects coming to Clicktack County. As we know, Lund Hill is already being installed, Bluebird's on the back of it. There's a third one proposed in that area. It, we're going into Carriageur around Goldendale. So, you know, I've been looking for those answers for a long time of what Clicktack County or you as a personal commissioner feel are the benefits for these renewable energy, solar, industrial complexes to come to Clicktack County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? 7211.
Uh, this is Greg Wagner with C's. I'd like to ask Mr. Soder for the third time. Avengrid gave the county $300,000 for mitigation money for the damages done at the Lund Hill Solar Site, and it was earmarked for mitigation to solve the problems that Lund Hill caused. I'd like to know, has that money been used for mitigation? If it hasn't, where is it? I'd like to ask Mr. Christopher. You stated that in the radio interview that they're going to be billing these leasing landowners based on their income. You said wind and solar. When will that begin? I'd also like to know, with the conditions of approval for the Under Canvas project, I'd like to know, will all those conditions be met and satisfied before Mochi Lindblad permits the project? Because the Lund Hill project, there were eight conditions of approvals that were not met until 15 months after Mochi permitted the project. So if one of those studies came up that said we shouldn't permit Lund Hill solar project, it would have been too late. So will all the conditions of approval be met for Under Canvas? And then for the future Bluebird or Carriageur or Golden Solar or any other solar project that comes in the area? The whole reason for conditions of approval is to make sure there's no problems before a project gets permitted. And Mochi permitted Lund Hill 15 months before all the studies and agreements were done. So I'd like to have you answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? And we will go one last time. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? I am not seeing anyone. Would either of my seatmates like to respond to any of the public comments today?
I'll go first. Uh, I'm going to start from the most recent, work backwards, I guess, because that's the most freshest in my mind. Uh, Mr. Wagner, as far as the $300,000 in mitigation dollars, yes, the county did receive $300,000 in mitigation. It is still sitting in an account unused. It will be, um, determined at some future point what is, what it will be used for that meets our definition of what would be suitable mitigation. Um, as far as conditions of approval, I think you're misunderstanding necessarily. Conditions of approval are not necessarily, must all be completed prior to the issuance of a permit. Um, and I'm, and this isn't just conditional use permits, it's building permits. I mean, I am a consumer of many building permits. Over the course of my career, there are multiple conditions. I, I get the permit. It's before the project is finalized and I'm done, I must meet all of the conditions. the project is finalized and I'm done, I must meet all of the conditions. And so, conditions of approval that are, require studies or things, those typically, yes, have to be completed prior, if, if the permit is contingent on that. Although, they could run the risk of you could start construction on something and then you find out there's an issue, you're not going to get your final approval, you can't operate. And so, there is a, there is an incentive to complete all the conditions of approval, because until those are done, you don't have your permit to actually operate your project. No operation means no income, no revenue. So I can't imagine a multi-tens of millions of dollars of investment that folks are not going to get all their conditions done, so they can, they can get, they can move on. Ms. Bosque, as far as top three benefits of solar, well, my, I guess the first benefit I would say is to private property rights. I, I mean, frankly, I'm not pro-con, one way or the other, but I do, I do support that people have the right to use their property as they see fit within the existing rules. And I'm always going to support that, whether it's something I personally think is great or not is irrelevant, it doesn't matter. But there are undeniable tax benefits to the county from large scale, whether it's wind or solar, or a natural gas plant, or anything, or is those pay significant? And I know we've, I've, we've provided those to some folks as far as the millions of dollars of tax revenue that is flowing into Clickatack County from the wind projects, and we would anticipate that happening from the solar projects as well. And so, I'm gonna, I mean, that's, that's a couple. There's not a lot of, there's, there is, you know, there's short-term benefits as far as with the jobs during construction, those do help the economic sector as far as the, the hotels are full, the workers are eating in the restaurants, we saw that during wind farm construction. And yes, a, a specific project is only in county for, you know, a year, 18 months, but when you string several of those together over a course of time, it is a real economic impact. And those are typically, those are, those are mostly have been felt here in Goldendale, in, at, at least they did with the wind projects. And I assume the same thing. All of those workers have to eat somewhere, they recreate somewhere, they're, they're in the bars on the weekend, probably, I don't, I don't know. So there is definitely economic benefit from these projects. Okay, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course. Christopher?
Yeah, I'll go in the order they were received. So Adele, as far as his argument that we're making people pay double for their building permits now, I would argue that the taxpayers pay $5 million to the County General Fund in property tax out of our $50 million budget. So the sheriff's budget is $5 million. So you could argue that all of the money you pay in property tax and the general fund just subsidizes the sheriff's office and nothing more. And so you could also argue that it's the landfill that pays for the planning department and not the taxpayers. So there's a million ways to look at that argument. The argument is, we're either charging everybody or we're charging nobody. It needs to be fair across the board. It always was fair, and with the changes that you guys argued for, it will continue to be fair, just different. Ms. Mokoth, thank you, I agree, I believe everything here looks really good, and hopefully the community of Goldendale will take notice and improve their stuff in the whole community. Sheri, I agree, hopefully tonight is friendly and calm and rational, and people can agree to disagree when need to, and hopefully it doesn't turn into the Jerry Springer Show. If it's good, we can have more of them, if it's bad, more of them may be a problem. Top three benefits, that was a good one. That, that kind of had me stumped for a while. But you have to say the landowners getting paid outrageous sums of money is a benefit, at least to them. Increased tax revenues for junior taxing districts, that is definitely a benefit. And jobs, local jobs are definitely a benefit. Now, you can argue the number of jobs, but I would say even if the jobs is two, but those two people are making $37.50 an hour to unload a flatbed truck, they're very happy and grateful for their two jobs paying $37.50. So the argument is not whether there's benefits, because there's obvious benefits. The argument is whether the benefits outweigh the eyesore that is going to be created. In that argument, I would probably side with you that it's not worth it, but I can't argue and say that there's no benefits. Greg, I would again ask you to go back and listen to my testimony. I am not the county assessor, I cannot say how things are going to be taxed, I can only guess, or, or foreshadow, or make assumptions on how I think things are going to be taxed, because I am not the elected assessor, and I have no say-so over it. So to say, I said they will be taxed, I have no ability to say they will be anything. I said they probably will be. So you're going to have to check that question with the county assessor, because that is up to the county assessor on how they tax, when they tax, and when that starts. Conditions of approval being met, Mr. Sauter pretty much summed that one up. So that's all on my list.
Thank you, gentlemen. And now it is 1:30. So I will defer my responses until next time, so we can move on. Thank you all for being here for public comment. Thank you all for your questions, and I hope the answers from my seatmates gave you a sense of understanding and security. With that, we are going to close public comment and move into public hearings, public meetings, and bid openings. And our first one is a public meeting to consider approval of short plat, SPL 2022-4. Applicants is Alan Feller.
Short plat 22, excuse me, 2022-04 is a proposal to create two lots from parcel 06122053000200. The proposed short plat is located within a portion of Section 20, Township 6 North, Range 12 East, Willamette, Meridian, Clickatack County, Washington, in the Glenwood vicinity. The administrative review of this short plat has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from road, treasurers, health, and planning departments. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds this to be, that this is in the public's interest to approve this short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of short plat 2022-04.
Discussion?
Questions?
Questions?
Is minimum lot size up there five acres?
Yes.
Is all of Glenwood that way? Do you know off the top of your head?
I'd say that, yeah, not necessarily.
Closer in town, it's either.
Yeah, I was going to say, right in town, five acres, outside 20 probably. That was my only question, sir. No, no other comments.
Oh, okay, I was just going to look it up for you.
Yeah, so we could look it up.
I was just asking if it got up later, if they didn't know off the top of their head.
But you are stating this, this project meets the, the zoning requirements.
Yes, they do, yes.
Whatever.
That was my question.
I'm good, no, I'm, I'm good.
Simple as a simple gift.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to grant final approval of short plat SPL 2022-0 for the applicant is Alan Feller.
I would second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve short plat SPL 2022-04. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we will move on to consider approval of short plat SPL 2021-20. Applicant is Michael Cahill.
Okay, short plat SPL 2021-20 is a proposal to create three large lots from parcel 0415040001000. The proposed short plat is located in the Goldendale vicinity, off of West Winterstein and North Winterstein Roads. Large lot, short plat, the administrative review of this short plat has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road, health, planning, and treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve this short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL 2021-20. Applicant, Michael Cahill.
Any discussion?
I have one question on this one that you may or may not know the answer on. Did he end up getting the stream relisted as a non-fish bearing? Do you know off the top of your head?
He did retype the stream.
That's what I thought, okay.
Um, it was not as big. It was an issue, yeah, from the beginning, but there has been no water in it. Just a matter of going through the water typing process.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant final approval, the short plat SPL 2021-20, parcel number, wow, I set myself up, 04-15-0400-0010, backslash 00, in Goldendale vicinity, Michael Cahill.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve short plat SPL 2021-20. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next we have a public meeting to consider the approval of simultaneous boundary line adjustment BLA 2022-02 and short plat SPL 2022-05. Applicants are David and Judy Straight and Brian and Virginia Knowles.
Boundary line adjustment BLA 2022-02 is a proposal to adjust the boundary between parcels 03131350000100 and 03131350000200. And short plat number, short, SPL 2022-05, it's a proposal to create four lots from parcel 03-13-1350-000100. The proposed boundary line adjustment and short plat is located in a portion of Section 13, Township 3 North, Range 13 East, Willamette, Meridian, Clickatack County, Washington, in the High Prairie vicinity. The administrative review of this short plat has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road, health, treasurers, and planning departments. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that this is in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment and short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of BLA 2022-02 and short plat 2022-05.
Any discussion?
Is this in the High Prairie area where we have water well issues? Or is that a different section?
It's not, it's not in that.
No, it is not.
That one where we mandated the, or, or, I guess mandated, that they drill to the lower aquifer. It's to the north, I guess, of that.
It is to the northeast.
Northeast of it.
Yeah.
Good question, though.
Wells in that area, can any be from 200 feet to 450 feet deep? But no issues that I've seen.
Good enough.
And I know we measure wells right near there.
Go for the questions, sir.
Okay, I'm good then, if you're ready for a motion.
Yep, I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment BLA 2022-02 and short plat SPL 2022-05. The applicants are David and Judy Straight and Brian and Virginia Knowles.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Run it ahead. Thank you so much.
Sorry for asking weird, strange questions that catch you off guard. I don't know if you can ever be prepared for my questions. Well, I use these as learning experiences as well, so.
We're gonna, we're just, we're going to get this signed, and then we'll move on. All right. It's already passed, there's two already. All right, next up, we are going to move into miscellaneous reports, and we're going to have a board discussion concerning four-day work week schedules and working remotely due to the lack of childcare and rising food costs. It looks like we have a good portion of directors' fuel costs.
Food costs as well.
Food, fuel.
Don't have to eat lunch that day, I guess.
Sorry, I was adding one. All right. Who originally, was this, it was Commissioner Christopher, okay, please, lead off.
So my thinking on this goes multiple facets. It goes into our employment rates and benefits, and how hard it is to recruit and find staff, and jobs are being more competitive. And other jobs are offering a lot more work from home or four-day work week type options. So I'm thinking this may not necessarily cost us any money, but it might be something that could be an added benefit for employees that might make them a little happier to stay employed. And I know this is already something that is allowed in the county, you just have to come before the commissioners and get approval. I would just ask for it to be encouraged, I guess I would say. Instead of being a special circumstance, that, that we would issue encouragement to see if there's ways that you can make this work to our directors, and then it's up to them, elected officials, obviously, it's up to them. I'm open to hear comments on either way, I could be completely off base. So, but that's why we're on it for it.
Commissioner Sauter?
I appreciate you bringing up the topic, because I think we do, I think we're in a pretty tough labor market, and it is something, I mean, if it's a tool that we could use as far as for recruitment enhancement, whatever, and I, I'm interested in talking about it. I'm a little concerned about the logistics of it as far as depart, being able to apply it away across departments, because my, I mean, the number one concern is always going to be, and I know it is for all of us, is that we be able to provide the services to the public. And if we can, I'm totally open, and I've always been open to, if there is a way that we can do that that's different than the traditional way, I think it's up to the managers to, I'm not going to manage into the departments for that. The concern I would have is that there is, the ability to be able to do that is going to be different in small departments that have very few staff versus larger departments. And is there, I hate to use the word equity, that's the word of the year, that would be the only thing I'd have to think about as far as it, because if I happen to be an employee in a department that's really small, that there just is no logistical way to do it without shutting my doors to the public one day a week, then, then it's a fairness thing as far, and I don't, I don't, maybe it's, maybe I'm frightened about nothing, maybe there, I, I wonder about that. But I, I think it should be, and I think it is now, it's not encouraged. I would, I would agree, I think we, we have a way of doing it, but it's more of we tolerate it, we certainly don't, it's a special circumstance that it's.
And I don't in any way, just for clarification, I should have brought that up when I was speaking. I'm not interested in a department coming forward and saying, hey, our department wants to close its doors on Fridays. Because I think we have to be available and open to the public five days a week, but even if you have two employees and one of them works Monday through Thursday, the other one's Tuesday through Friday. Unfortunately, yeah, you're not on a four-day week if that person's on a vacation day.
Right.
You know, because I want the, the department open five days a week, but, so just for clarification.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from everybody who decided to show up. Your thoughts, concerns, I mean, I start playing, well, what would my concerns be? And that is, if I know I can move from one department to another, so I can get a four-day work week rather than a five-day work week, you're going to see certain positions sought out to the detriment of potentially other departments or electors who just don't have that ability. But then again, anybody can, anybody can go work in the jail right now, and they would be happy to have 12-hour workdays. But are there But are there, I mean, directors, electeds? Is there, is it, does anybody have any thoughts? Anybody wanna? Come forward, Gordy, please. Director Kelsey.
So we have quite a few people on alternate schedules, I mean, our contract for our, some of our people, it's part of the contract that their schedule changes in the summer to four tens. And I think we've tried and kind of thought about it for our office, but coverage seems to be a problem, even for us, we're a bigger department to cover the front office. So I think that really the only way, we've talked about that it would work, is that we're just shut down on Fridays. And, you know, for Fridays for us are, it's really slow in the office, I know that's not the case for others. They're just as busy on Friday as they are on Monday, maybe more so. And so they have less of an ability to cover each other, you know, so you kind of have coverage, but then someone goes on vacation, somebody has a baby. You know, there's all these things that you can't control and they're part of life and business. And so unless it's, we just aren't available, I know Skamania County does that, their Public Works Department, they're just closed on Fridays, and they've been doing that for a couple of years.
Do you know if the rest of the county is closed or just Public Works?
No, because I've called some of the others in the rest of the county looking for Public Works. And so they're open, but it's.
See, that to me would be confusing if you had some departments closed on Fridays and others open on Fridays.
Yeah, but I know for us it would be difficult to do that, we've tried things like that and even normal circumstances, it can get challenging. So.
Yeah, I would say, you know, my experience from when we had the, in two thousand and ten, when we had, you know, everybody took one, well, different departments met their, their budget goals in different ways, but pretty universally, there was a lot of departments that people were furloughed one, one day a month. And it inevitably was, when I was not in this job, when I was in the, my private sector thing, every time I wanted to do something where I needed to talk to the Health Department, the Building Department, I managed to hit one of those furlough days. I mean, it's, and it literally is one day a month, and it's like, I just had really bad luck, it seemed like. And I know there was frustration, and that was, you know, that was a time the public was more forgiving because it was, it was happening across the whole business sector where it was, you know, it was a recession and they, so I, I think the, the, you know, taking care of our customer, customer service is the most important thing. And that's why, I think that's part of the reason why the bar is so high for, for those circumstances now, where you have to kind of make your case because it's really hard for it not to have an impact and have a conflict. And so we always kind of try to weigh that. But I would say, again, the job market is different than it used to be, and it's like, you're gonna be, if I'm a customer, I'm gonna be super impacted if there's nobody in there ever. Which is a, we're seeing now, I mean, that that's, so would I rather have somebody, you know, once in a while, or I can't get somebody, or there's nobody? Which is, could happen.
I, I think even if we did go to four tens Fridays, our office is closed, we'd still have all of our inspectors, when contractors working on Fridays in the summer, we're, we're still gonna be here. And then we still have our inspector that does utilities and road approaches and that kind of stuff, he'd still be here to get available. I, I think there's some things that we can't not be here to do, and then in the wintertime, we can't do four tens.
No.
During those three or four months. But the rest of the year, maybe there's an opportunity.
It only snows Monday through Thursday, so we're good.
Yeah, so, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on forward, I see you in the back.
Two hands over there.
Whichever one gets there first. Ladies first.
You can both come.
I thought you were pointing at him, I didn't, I thought, I didn't think you were.
There's two seats up here.
For the Building Department, that wouldn't work. We do inspections five days a week, three days a week on the west side, two days a week on the east side. Jean can easily already put in more than eight hours during the summer. So for us to do four tens, we attempted that a few summers ago and then he ended up working twelve-hour days. So, it wouldn't work for us, we would have to be closed as well, one day, because we only have five people, I mean, we're a full staff of five. And people are used to our inspection schedule.
Right.
So that would be hard to revise.
Yes, they are.
Yes. And it's been that way a long time, so.
Well, and it's hard for some of them, like Jean, to work from home.
Yes.
Kind of hard to do an inspection from your house.
No one from my department can easily work from home because all our files are upstairs. We tried it during COVID and there was no way we could answer questions from home, you just can't. So it would be very difficult for us to do without being closed today a week. And then you would have more inspections to do on the four days. So, we'd have a very, very busy two days on the west side then.
Right.
Because we have a very large county that we inspect with one person, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Many of us in the room have administrative functions, and so if there are elected offices that are open five days a week or director's departments that are open five days a week, then in most cases, you need to have administrative staff because those are our customers. I can't speak for facilities, but, you know, IT would need to be available and HR typically is available and even finance. So it would be challenging for the administrative departments if some departments or a majority of the departments are here five days a week for us not to be here to provide the service. The flex schedules is well established in policy, so I appreciate your encouraging it. It's up to the department director or elected officials discretion to offer or accept an employee's request for that, and then, of course, commissioners get the final, the final say. My observations are that all of the directors and elected officials do the best they can to acknowledge and approve those when they come forward. So I think, I think everybody's trying to do it now. Hopefully, they can do it more if it's possible, but I think the one area that we, we tend to get some mixed signals on is remote working, because there is no policy, there is no established practice for remote working. I mean, on one extreme, you have people working at home all the time, there's all kinds of workplace issues, L and I issues potentially. We've not really got into those, there's no policy. But just the simple encouragement of it, of being able to do it, and is that something that has to be approved by the commissioners? Is that something that's between the directors and elected officials and their employees on a case-by-case basis? Again, you could get into the same argument, if everybody works from home, then there's nobody here, but there's many, many positions that, that can work offsite. And there's, and there's quite a few that do now. So maybe some feedback from the commissioners on remote working and, and your thoughts on that.
Could I, a follow-up? So when you say, how, just as a rough idea, as we said, as you said, there's some jobs people can do, they're doing it now and they can do it, and there's other things, it just doesn't work. Any sense as far as the number, you know, is a third of the workforce would, could, could do remote work or two-thirds or?
Yeah, I don't.
Pretty much to the folks in the room, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I guess my question's to the room.
I mean, I don't have a sense from the other departments, who could and couldn't, do we have some that work out of state full-time?
I mean, I'm looking at Brenda and it's like, and all her folks are all, they gotta be in there. You can't, I'm not gonna count ballots from home, I'm not gonna license vehicles from home, I can't. But other departments, there's, there's things, yeah, Mr. McClure, Director McClure.
Yeah, in case people are, so they can hear you.
I have one employee that works in the office two days a week and then remotely three days a week, and it seems to work out pretty well. Another that works four tens and sometimes those are remote and sometimes not, depending on their babysitter situation in some cases. But you look at the productivity and both of them, I think, are doing a very good job, so I'm not seeing a downside in productivity there. But I am seeing a little bit of loyalty, I think, to the county in accommodating those.
And I, I guess that's where I'm going.
Yeah.
Is, you know, that employee might be able to go somewhere else and, and make seven grand more a year, but that place is not gonna be as flexible on him working from home where he can watch his kids, or she can watch her kids a couple of days a week. So I guess I'd say, if you can do it, I encourage it, because I think that builds loyalty to the county. And I, fully understanding that some departments and offices can't.
But my department is also one that doesn't see a lot of walk-in traffic, it's just not the nature of what we do.
Thank you, Director McClure. Anyone else in the audience?
Yes, and I'm sorry, earlier, I should have said, Madam Auditor, not Brenda.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, I'm so offended.
You're so offended, you're gonna quit over it, right?
Yeah, December.
You're quitting together.
Mutual assured destruction.
Wouldn't let you work from home, yeah, I'm telling you.
That was it, I'm done.
Yeah, so Dave probably, Commissioner Sodder, excuse me.
True shit.
Yeah. Probably remembers back, oh, probably two thousand eight or nine, we were asked, the commissioners asked the departments to come up with innovative ways to try to save money. My office, we tried it, four nines, didn't cut anybody's benefits or anything like that, we did save money. It didn't help me for losing a person, but that's a different story, in the end, because of budgets.
But you're over that.
I am, not really.
They still talk about it twelve years later.
Yeah, so, you know, what it did for us, it, the employees liked it, but the administration, you know, when somebody would take a vacation or they'd have a sick day or whatever might happen, I found myself working twelve and fourteen-hour days, and so did my chief deputy. And that doesn't work because my staff has to be in the office, and we tried it, and I've had a lot of them want to go back, you know, the, well, I only have one of the old timers there now, but wanted to go back to four tens or four nines or something, and I said, oof, just think about, no, it worked well for you, but not for me. So, that's just my viewpoint on it. Some, like you say, some can, some can't. I've decided mine, no matter how much we want to save money or make people happy, staff, we have to be in the office. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't even think about some of the management having to work more to cover, yeah, so that's a good call.
So I talked with Judge Krop today about this, and, and this is for Superior Court. Statutorily, we have to stay open five days a week and we have to be able to offer those services because our defendants are on timeframe. So we have to see them as soon as we can and do all those things, and we need those others' offices that offer the services that we need, like the clerks or the prosecutor's office. They have to be available to us to help us get that done. And it also affects the sheriff's office and the jail and, you know, so it all goes down, and we wanted to make sure that we just had that noted for everyone. And, and there are multiple RCWs that go to that, that we can reference for you. So, we just wanted to make sure that that was put on record for everybody, so, thank you.
So, um, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, you guys were still open five days during that downturn, you just, I just shuffled the work, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anybody else in the room? How about electeds, department heads that are online? Anybody have any thoughts, questions, or concerns? I know you're all listening.
Brenda's definitely listening, she's up there.
That's okay.
Director McClure's in two places at once.
No? Look at that.
Highest attendance we've had, yeah.
I guess I was one of those employees that was on a alternative work schedule, and we had to come in front of the county commissioners and plead the case of why it would be in the best interest of the county.
Right.
And I did that for multiple years, and I thought that was a good way to, you know, from that department in order to say, this is where we're at, this is where we're going, this is how we're gonna manage. But I see, you know, the work from home and I also see the, you know, the four tens, that seems to me to happen a lot in the exempt employee positions because you're pretty much always at work. I mean, the, whenever the phone calls, you answer whether it's your day off or the weekend or whatever it is. And those are also some of the positions that we're having a hard time filling as well. So, it worked really well for me personally and my life and my, you know, childcare and all that, and I'm absolutely in favor of it when it can work. And so what I've heard and seen is, is that that building over there, it's really difficult to do versus this building over here, because we're providing, in essence, different services between the electeds versus the department heads. But I thank you, Commissioner Christopher, for bringing this up. I think, looking forward at the economy, at where things are going and how hard it is to find employees, we're going to have to remain competitive and we're going to have to be nimble as, as a county to ensure that we can attract the talent that can do the job, that we can ensure to retain the people that we have that are doing a good job and that we can support our staff. I hear everything you say, Brenda, Madam Auditor. When you say that, when you go to a four schedule or a nine schedule, even in a department as large as Gordy's, it still adds work to the department heads. And, and I'm a firm believer that you all are professionals, that you know what's best for your departments and that you know what's best for your employees. And so when you come saying, we've got an employee who, who, who has to commute from Hood River and needs to work in the office two, from White Salmon, the Pioneer Center three, and this is how we're going to retain and attract this talent, you get a thumbs up from me. So I don't think we need to make any policy changes, I think you just needed the, the direction from the boards saying, yeah, we trust you.
Is there, you want more than that?
Do I want more than that? No.
Okay.
I think I'm where I wanna be.
Yeah, because I support that a hundred percent. I think ultimately it's up to.
Right.
You know, to, to run the, you know, if you gotta come and advocate for something, then I think we, and I don't know that we've, when I said before, we tolerate it, maybe that's a little strong. I mean, it didn't used to be, it used to be, you needed, we needed to see clear benefit to the county.
Right.
Not the employee. And I would say now that's different in that it's, it's, because the, the benefit to the employee is a benefit to the county because, huh, we still have an employee.
And that is not, you know, like I said, I never expected or wanted the county to go to four days a week and shut down on a specific day. This kind of went that direction. It was more of a allow an employee to work from home or one employee in your office to work four days a week from home type of a scenario, if need be to retain said employee via childcare or what have you. So I think this board through its discussion has maybe made it a little clearer to its directors that it is open for discussion if they have a case that they would like to bring forward, and that's all I was asking for.
Well, it was something we probably needed to talk about, and we'll probably talk about more. All right, thank you all for coming.
You're welcome to stay.
You're welcome to stay through Consent Agenda.
Watch us sign things.
I want to know why they all weren't here for Citizen Comment.
I was at DOL.
Yeah.
Heather's there, so I can come.
They were. They're still here.
I was gonna say, they're still here. Record attendance. I was gonna say, just that has probably saved staff time and hours because they would constantly run over here anytime there was something on the agenda. And now they...
Yeah, that's true.
They're getting far more work done now than they did in years past.
They never ran over here. The here wasn't here then.
No, we ran over there. Same story.
Why don't we...
There's a, I think there's a positive budget opportunity that we, that we can use these and sell them for insomnia, you know? Like I do, you do Calm, the Calm Act and the Sleep Story. This, they got nothing on this.
So what you're saying is they're all sleeping right now?
No, during that, no.
Half of them, I appreciate that they're staying awake. You gotta figure, half the time you go, well, so-and-so's on, and then you try to get them to respond and they're not, they're not. So, yeah, I think it's background and they may be away from the computer half the day.
Why don't we go straight to our chief jail deputy, Carmen?
She's here.
For, since she's here and was the only one who didn't get up and walk out.
I'm actually proposing something that's not going to cost the county money.
Yeah.
It won't.
Just kidding.
So the jail's gonna just go to four days a week?
Good beer out for good behavior, three.
All ankle bracelets?
Yep.
No incarceration at all?
Come back on Monday.
You're either one.
Yeah.
You're gonna need this.
So last year, I had a young man who applied for a job with the jail and we did not hire him. And then he went on into the Army. He contacted me a number of months ago because he's going to be getting out. And he's stationed back in, like, Maryland or somewhere. The Army is offering internships. And so I think that you were provided a copy of this. So the internship allows them to work for an employer where they'd like to get training at. He wants to go into law enforcement corrections field. So it pays for them to work 40 hours a week. They're overseen by the Army. All of their pay, all their salary and every benefit is paid by the Army. So there's no out-of-pocket expenses for us. I just get an employee 40 hours a week.
Including, including LNI coverage or risk, risk management, the Army covers all of the...
So, the internships vary in length, but up to a maximum of 120 days. And I do not have to guarantee a job when they're done. So it's a good opportunity for us and it's a really good opportunity for, this young man is a local, young man who would be coming back into the community. So he doesn't have a start date yet. I just got an email from him on the Saturday. It's, everything's got to be approved through their legal first and then he would let me know a start date. But as sure-staffed as I am right now, I could really use any help I could get. Because there's a lot that we could do. I mean, 40 hours a week is a lot to add with no out-of-pocket cost.
When we put this on the agenda, we weren't sure if the commissioners needed to approve it. It's been under the PA's review and there's no budgetary impact to the county. So he didn't feel like it needed to be approved. So we just continued thinking, it's good public knowledge, it's a good program and maybe it'll grow. And the state has large military bases and maybe there's other interim programs that potentially could be available, maybe even in other departments. So...
So, what all can this person do because they haven't been through, you know, the academy for you guys? Are they, is he just opening doors, running the control room?
Could be working in the control room, it could be filing records, answering phones. There's just a lot that we could have this person do without going to the academy.
Okay.
It'd be very beneficial. Because currently I have two open positions and then I have one that's out on FMLA through almost the end of September. So it would really help because just even having an additional control board person would be huge help. I mean, I have two now. One is on a set schedule on rotation, but can only work days. And the other one rotates night and days. So it'd be very beneficial to the jail. In days like, weeks like this, I mean, we don't even have front office staff. We have posse running the front office force while answering phones. Karen and I do all the other legwork. They can at least answer the phone and transfer it to one of us. So anything is of help at this point.
Commissioner Christopher?
Two questions. First question, would they have to go through the box test, psych eval, all that kind of stuff to work inside the jail department?
No, especially if I haven't just doing records and stuff.
Second question that you spoke of that got me thinking about this question. You have one CBO that's only on days, I would imagine, five days a week.
She's on a, she's now on a rotation. She's just, I have to keep her on a day shift rotation.
So the other CBO, when they're on days, are on the opposite days of this one?
Um, not always.
Or do you have two CBOS on the same shift?
Sometimes we have them on the same shift.
Wow.
Which, I don't have...
Seems kind of unproductive.
No, it does. It actually works out pretty well.
Really?
Because I don't have any medical staff and I have medical files about this deep that need to be filed.
Okay.
So in the job description, it says extra duties as assigned.
Okay.
Those are assigned.
Makes sense.
Because we don't have anybody to file.
So you, when you have a double staffing, you have one that's actually doing CBO work and the other one's doing administrative to remove the backlog. Makes sense. Good job.
Yeah.
Questions or concerns? Other than that, bring the man on, 10th Mountain Division. Ooh, yah, baby.
But this kind of follows with what you were just talking about. This is a way to get real-life experience for folks who want to transition out of the military. And if we could just get the Navy to park a ship down by the bridge, they could all come up and have an intern program.
We can't build a dock.
And build a dock. So, but this might be another avenue to...
Yeah. It's a good opportunity and...
I don't, I don't really see a downside. That's what I'm trying to look for. Yeah, it's always like, if it seems too good to be true, it probably is.
Right. Well, I guess the one thing is, could the, the union have a problem with it?
The agreement says it can't displace work and that would be the issue with union. It can't displace a union position. And the military's agreement also dictates that that not happen. So...
We would not be displacing any union position. I don't have enough to displace.
And to me, the only thing that's a question is risk.
They're displacing themselves.
Trained or can't pass a background, can't pass a mental.
And I would...
And we never put them through those.
I would do a background check, absolutely.
But if there's a risk of liability, that would be my only...
Well, we'd never leave them on, never be left unattended because they're supposed to be provided supervision.
I think...
We are. Never left unattended.
Never left unattended.
And if they have to go through...
Don't mind these two.
Through the access training so that we're good with State Patrol and all, all of those details, we absolutely would do that. But as far as the other background part, at this point, he wouldn't be hired so officially. So we would not do, have to do that. But definitely a basic background. Did you ask him if he has any other friends that are interested in coming to you?
One step at a time, one step at a time.
Every 120 days.
Yeah.
Right, right. But I am interested in finding out if the other branches of the service offer a similar...
Right.
Because within the gorge, if you look at, you know, 100-mile radius, probably lots of folks transitioning out of the military, that different branches of the service that may offer a similar program. So it'd be good to...
Opportunity to get our local kids back home and into a job that's going to be potentially a lifetime career for them and keep them in our county. We want our locals to, to have those careers. So...
Well, I haven't said anything, but I think it's a great idea. Good job.
Thank you. I'm all done now.
All right.
I can go back to work.
Sometime in your schedule, Casey and I have two HR issues whenever...
You're sitting there right now.
Hey, the chair is warm for you.
I can stay back here.
No, it's not your HR.
Yeah.
And that's if they ask you to stay.
Yep.
Or if it's really bad, they ask you to leave.
Have a good day.
First, it's notified this morning that our IT manager has accepted another position with another employer and will be leaving in 14 days from Friday, I think. So we're asking permission to post the IT manager at grade 72 and go steps one through five.
Is that what it's at now?
Yes, that's the grade it's at now. Yeah.
I would like to remind the board that this position is, if I remember correctly, when we did our salary survey, this position was at an 89 or a 90 and just missed the cutoff of our 88. This was one of the ones we were going to be looking at and reevaluating on whether we paid enough.
Wasn't the HR manager gonna...
Yeah, I'm gonna bring that back to you. Yeah.
But for right now?
So, anyway, thank you, Commissioner, for reminding. Okay.
Yeah.
And then I'll be reporting soon, probably next week. This is going to create some significant issues in IT. We're down to, there'd be two staff now. So we're going to be in the, just keeping the wheels rolling on the bus.
Mostly.
We're not, just two people covering a pretty complex IT system for 260 employees.
That's kind of my question. Are those other two people, I mean, their pay grade is here and the ones we have open are here. Can they do that? I mean...
Yeah, we're gonna meet, I'm gonna meet with the staff and Jeff, Jeff's outlining things that are his primary areas of responsibility and we'll figure out how to cover those. Jeff is willing to continue on to help us and we just haven't figured out what that is yet, whether it's a casual employee or independent contractor, but he is willing to be available. That was gonna be my question. What's our, what's our backup plan? Because he is our primary network.
Don't lock him in.
Yeah.
Because he is our primary network.
Like Jeff, who? I don't know what you're talking about.
You know, we are here 24/7. I mean, that works up and running all the time. So we need, we need, and look into some other contingency planning. So this is...
Why we're doing this, I mean, I know you have like nine million things on your plate, but I, I guess I fear, and, and I guess we can see in six months from now, the other position we have over in IT that's open has been open for what, three months, four months? And we had one application?
Not one that...
In your head, no.
Well, but not one that...
We've had applications.
But none that beat...
Not minimum qualifications.
Yes and no.
I guess my, my worry about...
Look left first before you answer.
Well, it was just kind of weird there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the bobblehead's...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I guess my question and my worry is if we don't quickly look into salary elsewhere, not just county, other counties, but like hospitals and PUDs and whatever, we're going to find ourselves six months down the road with still no employees running our IT department. So, I don't know. I just, that worries me.
I can't say that the position he took was in the gorge, probably one of the largest employers in the gorge. And it was open for nine months before they were able to fill it with him. So...
And it is substantially higher number than we're offered. So we're going to be a wow, is my point.
So we'll be back. But I'm just gonna ask for all those online and we're gonna need a lot of patience, understanding from folks and we'll do the best we can. I know Curtis and Shelby will continue to do the good job they're doing. And Jeff, appreciate the fact he's willing to help us as much as he can for as long as he can till we get this figured out. And we wish Jeff the best. He never did sing a song to you on an update, but hopefully he can pre-record something and...
If he's listening, I would like to say, how dare you leave, but for all you've done, sir, you've always been a pleasure and I've always appreciated you. So...
Thank you, Commissioner. And then finally, so as you know, the HR clerical position is open. And Elizabeth Taylor, who is the office manager for the weed department part-time, used to be full-time office manager for WSU in the weed department and then just went part-time for, for the weed department. She's willing to return to full-time and we're willing to, all of us are willing, Marty and Elizabeth and Casey and I are willing to try this out with your blessing, is that she would work, basically work a total of 36 hours between the two departments. And it'd be a different pay grade. We're not authorized to pay at the office manager level. So she'd have the pay in our office clerical position and then she'd get paid higher wage for the work she does for Marty. But she's willing to try it. We're willing to try it. Marty's willing to try it. And she's already located in the front of our office anyway, and so it makes sense. And she's a very experienced office manager, very good at what she does. So we're all kind of excited about it. So it's, well, it's within the scope of our budget. We would just ask consideration to let us try this, make sure it works for Marty and works for us. It's significantly less hours than we're used to, but, but we think it's worth doing and, and we're excited about having her work with us. So... If I may.
You may.
Is there any, is there any issue with, I mean, can you flex within the two jobs? I mean, for periods of ti, because there could be time when the work split is not this, you know, where it's, like they, you know, Marty has a busy time and maybe you have a busy time, you know, open enrollment or whatever, where you need the help. Is that, is that allowed? Can we do that where if it's not just a straight every week? I don't know if that causes issues with the auditor. Well, we just have to compensate her. We wouldn't want her working, you know, 24 hours at the lower pay and 16, getting less pay for the office manager. No, but I'm saying maybe on a, can you look at it over a period of time so that it evens out the way it's supposed to? I mean, to me, that would be the best because sometimes, like all jobs have workflow that you have times that you just, there's more to do and other times there's less. And it's not like, oh, it's this, you know, I don't really, not that you're ever not going to have something to do, but it might be... Well, we see that as a benefit, having briefly talked to Marty, Casey just got back this morning, and Elizabeth and I have talked, and Elizabeth and Casey have talked. You know, if she's up there and she's working for HR at that point, somebody comes in for weed and pest, she's not going to ignore them and say, oh, that's not my... Right. Or if she's working in the weed and pest department or doing something for Marty and somebody's looking, somebody in HR, that she's not gonna, so I think, you know... Yeah, maybe I'm trying to make it too formal. Yeah, I think, so I think that's part of the... Never mind. I withdraw the question. But I think that's part of the benefit of having Elizabeth do it is that she's in that area anyway and will track all of that. And Marty's absolutely willing to try it as well.
I guess my question is why 36 hours?
I think that works with the hours that she had already committed to lead. And so to do...
Some volunteer activity.
Yeah, yeah. She's got some volunteering that she does on a Thursday afternoon.
So she doesn't want 40, she wants 36.
She's willing to do 40, but it wouldn't work within the Sunday to Saturday schedule for the 40 hours a week. So then that would kick it into overtime.
And her volunteer activities are important to her. So we were willing to, to do that. It would, time would come out of our side, not Marty's side. But we're, we're pretty excited. And so we're all willing to make compromises to make it work, to give it a chance to work. And then we'll come back and report to you later in the year. Originally, that whole workspace was kind of designed for, for that in mind anyway, to have...
She, she currently works enough to get benefits, so...
No, but we're budgeted for benefits. So we'll, we'll cover that in our budget. And yeah, so she'll regain her benefits that she had for quite a while. And Marty doesn't, isn't budgeted for that expense, but we are in our budget. So that's what we would cover.
Well, I think it's still going to be a savings.
Oh, definitely. Absolutely be a savings.
And, and the one that I have a hard time with is, is she could be going from working for you to working for Marty on a two-minute basis. And tracking that time is ridiculous. And then getting paid a different amount for the time she's working with you versus Marty, that one kind of feels weird to me as well. Is there a way we could do some sort of a bringing, keeping it level for her, what she's currently making?
Well, what we were thinking is, and we didn't, I didn't want to do it now, is at some point, should this work come forward, maybe as part of the budget process and ask for consideration to make it an office manager on our side and bring the pay up. We were at the step 10... We were at the step ten for clerical two, so we're not that far apart. We're just not authorized to pay at her level because we don't have that position, specific title in our chart. So to do that, we would need to come forward and get permission to add the office manager. Still be a savings to our department, to the county, but it would add that ability for that pay grade into our work chart. So that's what we'd have to do.
So the reason I bring it up is to ask my seatmates, because is that something you would be interested in?
I guess I'll go first on that one. The scary part for that on me is that would be, be, be making an exception for an employee. If that is a office manager position and you want to go through a job classification, I'm fine with it. But if we're making it a higher pay grade just for an employee, I worry that we're gonna get pushed back from elsewhere that we're giving special favoritism over and above what that position has ever been before. See where I'm kind of coming from for this?
Well, I think what it.
That if there was a different way to do it, I would be happier.
Well, we didn't post for an office manager, we posted for clerical one, two and three and so.
It's never been an office manager.
No, but that's why I'm not asking you to do it today because we didn't post for that, she didn't apply for that, so. But that may be something I may come back to you in the future and ask for consideration, whatever process that would take and discussion that would entail as part of the budget process, but.
Well, I think what I would be interested in is that the employee feels like it's fair as far as the way we're. Yeah, we talked, the workload is getting, I mean, because I'm thinking, you know, from my private sector, like I did, we did a job, it was actually my one and only, it was a public, it was a public contract and so there were the mandatory, what the rates were, because it was a Davis Bacon job. And my, you know, I was small, there was only five, five employees, five guys, five people that were working and they all, the job rates were different depending on what the job they were doing, but they all did all the jobs at various times. And so we, rather than me trying to track all that and keep it fair, we just sat down and kind of figured out, on average, you're gonna spend, you know, you're gonna spend twenty-five percent of your time doing this job. You're gonna do fifty percent that, you know, where we had like four different categories. And we ended up that that's what we did, everybody was happy with it. It didn't mean that on one day, maybe they did fifty percent of their job was actually this thing and then, but then on Wednesday, it was flipped the other way and as long as everybody felt fine, like it was fair, that it wasn't minutely where we were managing it to the minute and that's the same kind of thing. I'm willing to, like, I, I think it's fine to do it, but if the employee feels like, yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm actually doing more work at, at the, for you, right, but I'm getting, yes, I don't know. I mean, I, it's a test.
Because she is a qualified office manager, if, you know, in the future, you guys start having her, I don't know, start doing the budget work, which you've never had that position ever do before, now you justify the higher wage. Versus just receptionist-y kind of person, it's hard for me to justify the higher rate.
Right, no, I absolutely understand and.
That's kind of where I'm going.
And again, that's why I didn't bring it forward at this point, but to your point, I think we're gonna look for that balance and, and then, and she is comfortable with it. We have talked to her about it and as we go through this and actually try it for a while, if we find that the scale is tipping one way or the other, or we've added duties, or the nature of the job has changed somewhat, then we would come back to you and go through a formal process, so.
I trust you. Or I at least trust Casey, so.
I would second that notion.
There you have it, the eyes have it.
And?
And, trust anyone.
As long as you don't come back anytime in the next month that another employee under your management.
Tuesdays after holiday are bad and they just got worse.
That was a low blow, buddy.
I'm just gonna take the high road.
That's because he has like twenty-seven departments now, so he's in charge of half the county at this point.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Administrator Van Cleve.
You just, see, Tuesdays after a holiday.
Tuesdays after a holiday.
I think they, there's, is your hangover got kicked in yet, you guys?
I'm hungover, it's on sweet tea, I had a little too much sweet tea.
No, too much.
A little sweet tea.
No, 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 just absolute Lipton sweet tea with lemon powder out of a jug, sorry, sir.
We're live, can we get back to the consent agenda?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with seventeen items.
I'll second the motion.
I will third the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Pay estimates.
By the way, something you guys don't want to hear while he's digging for that, was reading that Washington average wage, is that my seven point five percent last year? Or.
Average wage.
Just across the board?
Across the board, average wage in Washington.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve county's payable warrants in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents for the date ending July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion, a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I do not believe we have any pay estimates.
I didn't see any on there. Yeah. Board pending, gentlemen, what do you have?
Nothing exciting, had Southwest Washington workforce, which essentially they were just going over their budgets and we were approving budgets and yeah, we have the same issues everybody else has. Other than that, nothing new, less grants available this year. For. I have to go back through my email. Um, I don't. She's killing me now. I'll find it. Carry on.
Merry Christmas. Whenever I see yours, it's like, oh, I better do mine. Oh, yeah, because mine are, yeah, if you know it's me, it's way late. Waiting for the auditor to say no sometime just for fun. Not this one. Have we, Lee, for our meeting for Dalsport wastewater with the, have we reached out to the PUD or do you want me to do that? Say, I can, I can talk to Doug if you want, if the board wants me, because they were the ones that offered at or offered for to have a PUD commissioner and then the manager for, to answer any technical questions. So I can let, I can let Doug know if you want.
Okay.
That is, so we're set, it's August sixteenth, is that right?
Yes.
It's on the calendar, right?
Yeah, I think so. I'm impressed with myself that I remember that date from. It is.
I think it was CDBG grants, but I'm trying to find the right.
Community development programs or, or less than usual? Wow.
Because it's, the legislature is, let's call it earmarking them to the I-five quarter.
Oh. For the.
Next few years.
Did they say by how much?
It was significant. But I'm trying to find the documents, but it was a significant. Anyway, they also, on that, they said that there was going to be, they're gonna be making and pushing the legislature this year to fix and correct that and keep them level and even across the board in fair on both sides of the mountain. So that we would probably be seeing that in the legislature this year, because apparently this isn't the first time it's happened.
Really?
Other than that, that was about all of us.
Do you have anything?
I really don't, it was pretty quiet last week.
Everybody left for the holiday.
I think so.
It's an offensive league. I'll probably have some stuff to report next.
Yes. Enjoy your night.
We're at six thirty-five.
I'm, I'm sure it will go very well. No, I hope so, I hope it does.
I honestly do too.
I mean, we all go and have meetings on a regular basis with community councils and groups and we serve on these boards, I don't see there being a problem. Okay, is the prosecuting attorney online?
I am, I don't have a report this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are just cruising through it. Okay, thank you Prosecutor Canal, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we adjourn the meeting for today, no workshops going.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you to the twenty-six who were left, you made it all the way.